Seven zero, okay. Dr. Hedgecourt?
Yes, so we're here this evening to talk about the tax rate for St. Joseph's School District. Per state statute, we are required to turn our tax rate to Cannon County. And the tax rate is calculated using a form that I'm from the state auditor's office. It includes our assessed valuation from the previous year and the current year, as well as information that includes new construction and personal property. So when you take those calculations and put those into the state auditor's calculation, it gives you what's called a calculated tax rate ceiling. And so in St. Joseph's School District, we have three different levies. That includes our normal operating levy, our temporary operating levy, and our debt service operating levy. So based on those calculations that is sent back to us from the state auditor's office, we're asking the Board of Education to set the normal operating levy at 3.7429, which is the calculated tax rate ceiling, the temp operating levy at .6033, and then the debt service levy at .5701. The calculated maximum for that levy was .6675, but we are asking the Board to voluntarily roll that rate back to .0974 for a debt service rate of .5701. And the reason we're asking to roll back that debt service is to keep our total tax rate, the exact same from the previous year, at 4.9163. And just to let you know, that debt service levy does service the debt we have for our district. We do vet that through Raymond James, who is our municipal advisor for the district. And we do ensure that the tax rate that we ask the Board to set does handle the obligations that the district has to pay those bonds. So I would ask the Board to approve in our regular meeting the total tax rate of 4.9163. And then on the screen, you can see how those will be broken out into each individual fund. In our incidental fund, which is Fund One, will be 4.3462. And then in our debt service fund, which is Fund Three, will be .5701. There is also a document in your information with all the calculations on that pro forma that came back from the state auditor's office. If you'd like to ask about any questions on those calculations or any other questions you may have at this time.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, Dr. Hedgecourt, so my question is around the temporary operating levy. Are we saying that... What am I trying to ask? Does the fact that the second part of the document doesn't mention the temporary operating levy, does that mean anything?
On the pro forma?
I'm gonna say yes.
Okay, so on the pro forma, it's actually on Form A in the back. So the first Form A is gonna be the incidental rate.
Okay.
And then you have your debt service, which is Form B. Then there's a second Form A in the back that does the calculations on that temp levy. And that temp levy is a sunset levy that goes through the 28, 29 tax year that would have to be renewed again at that time if it were continued.
Okay, so it's basically just adding those two numbers together?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Dr. Hedgecourt, I was curious, why are we leaving that 10 cents? You know, we've got some financial straits, why are we leaving that 10 cents?
My best answer to that is to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. If we believe that our VAT levy, .5701, can handle our debt service, then leaving our tax rate at the same at 4.9163, I believe is always in the best interest. I don't believe that you should have a tax rate increase unless the voters approve an increase. Yes, by law, we can increase it by what the calculations from the state auditor say. But I think it's in the best interest of the district to let it remain at 4.9163 to be good stewards of those dollars and to only increase your total tax rate if the voters of St. Joseph's School District do approve so.
And, you know, I don't know how that changes year to year, but assuming that it increases, will that difference will grow between what the state allows and what we choose to do? And is that consistent with what other districts do?
It is consistent with other districts do. It all depends on assessed valuation and new construction, how that comes in, on the amount that you might voluntarily roll back. It might be only 5 cents next year versus 9 cents this year. It just all depends on how those numbers come in. But I do believe that, you know, in my experience and talking to a lot of CFOs who run other districts, it is in the best interest to never increase your levy unless the voters, you know, approve so at the ballots, instead of using state auditor's calculations to try to move it up and down a minimal amount, so.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? If there are other questions, public comments?
I have none turned in.
Have none turned in? All right, and if there are none, then is there a motion to adjourn and open back up at 5:30?
Some more.
Is there a second?
A second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Good evening, I call this meeting to order, Ms. Donovan?
Ms. Kearns?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Chesney?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Richmond?
Here.
Ms. Lanning?
Here.
I'll stand for the pleasure of the ladies, please.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any members on the board, if you could join me at the front, please? Dr. Lacy Adams?
Good evening, it is my pleasure to recognize Dr. Becky Evans and Ms. Brooke Kitzel, who, you guys wanna come on up? Who lead Scape Elementary School. We were excited to learn recently that Scape Elementary was recognized by Solution Tree as a promising practices professional learning community at work school. PLCs are schools and districts in which educators recognize that the key to improve the learning for students is ongoing job embedded learning for the adults who serve those students. The three big ideas of PLC call upon educators to, one, focus on learning, two, build a collaborative culture, and three, create a results orientation. Promising practices schools are recognized for building a strong foundation based on PLC concepts, implementation of these concepts for at least two years or more, and clear evidence of improved student learning over the period. Once measurable results can be seen, the school must explain its practices, structures, and culture, and then submit its application for consideration by the PLC review committee. Recognized, promising practices schools are listed on the All Things PLC.info website. Congratulations to Scape Elementary, it's a lot of hard work.
Audience participation. Number one, Mr. Shot?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dick Shot. I speak to you tonight as an educator of 32 years, as a teacher, guidance counselor, principal, founder, director of an alternative ed program, adult education program. I was part of the program that provided teacher training and counselor training. I know the educational system. The mission of the St. Joseph's School Department should read, "Every student will be provided equal access to all academic programs, extracurricular activities, and clubs and sports." The St. Joseph's School Department does not provide this equal access. Benton and Lafayette do not have equal access to program, the same program, as Central. Just a sample of that, this is really easy to obtain, you just go to any administrator, central office, and ask for it. Here's activities and sports. Benton High School, 28. Central, 70. Lafayette, information is still coming in. My guess, it would be sent closer to Benton. Advanced science curriculum, Central, 6. Benton, 0. Lafayette, 1. Advanced math, Central, 5. Benton, 1. Lafayette, 2. Some of the sixth graders are not provided the middle school experience that other sixth and seventh grade students do experience. Going through a middle school, junior high program gets you ready for high school. Not in terms of information, but in terms of process, change classes, change teachers. These issues of unequal access will be addressed when redistricting is completed, resulting in two high schools that are fed into by the elementary and middle schools. I ask the Board to consider an agenda item that requests that the present administration prepare for the Board the specific changes that will occur with two high schools. So you are aware of that. With this specific plan and with all the changes that occur, the business department may well be able to calculate the amount of money to be saved by the St. Joseph's School Board. I request that the planning for two high schools occur during the school year 25, 26. That's right now. The transition of two high schools to be implemented for the 26, 27 school year. Remember that every year that passes with three high schools is another year of unequal access.
Thank you, Mr. Shot. Okay, number two, Mr. Leek?
Good evening. I agree with a lot of those problems, and we can solve them without solving, or without spending hundreds of millions of dollars immediately by redistricting and ending the segregation in our community. I, if you want to, whatever plan we go forward with, let's have a board policy right now that we will balance free and reduce lunch in all of the schools. Let's put that out there. When we have new schools, I'm all for building schools. We should have them as part of a long-range plan for the next 20 years. Lafayette's all about opportunity. And for those of you that came down to the jamboree and watched the other day, I appreciate you being there. We did pretty well there. But the biggest things that we did there, you didn't see. You didn't see that our winning run was manufactured by a girl who's never stepped foot on a softball field until Saturday. She didn't even know what to do when the foul ball was hit. Another big hit came from a girl who's never touched a ball, who wouldn't even be a manager at other schools. These schools that we admire tell their players, "Don't even come out unless you play a high level of travel ball." It's simple. I don't want my kid at a big school. That's my choice. That's what I want. My kids have done well, even with the lesser opportunities. I think they've done well. We could solve a lot of the opportunities problems. It's almost like we're trying to break it a little bit more so we can get a new toy. Now, there's a lot of people here, I respect all of you, and I disagree with you. But I'll make a deal here right now. If you pull our administrative team, our administrators across the district, I respect them, they're very intelligent. I will follow their lead. If the majority of them took their children to larger schools, I will follow. But I think if we look, they've made a choice like me, that they want smaller schools as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leek. Okay, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Also, thank you, Jennifer? Thank you, Kim? Anytime you're ready?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes, all approved. Consent agenda, is there a motion?
I'd like to remove G, H, I, and K, please.
Could you repeat those, please?
G? H? I?
Okay.
Are you removing them, or are you moving them to action items?
I'm removing them so that we can vote on them separately.
Okay, so you're moving them down the agenda?
Yes, as action items. Okay, now would you like to make a motion about the consent agenda?
Sure, some more.
Now I need to repeat the whole thing.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of G, H, I, and K.
Thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Whom do you remember you're ready, would you call the votes? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
No.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yep.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Six, one? Okay, admin reports?
Sure, so first I want to start with our alternative methods of instruction plan. So if you remember, the Board approved back in June our AMI plan, an application to submit to DESI. They did approve that last week, so I just wanted to give you an update on that. We will send communication out to our families later this fall. And then moving to facilities, so back in June, we were charged with researching two options for a two-high school model, that being Central and Benton, and then also Central and Lafayette. DLR has been involved in this process and has toured our schools probably multiple times now. So this time, I'd like to invite Mike up to the podium just in case we have questions as we go along. You should have this document at your stations, and it's been updated from what was on assembly last week. We had updated numbers today as far as Lafayette costs. So if you notice here, you have three different columns. And all three of these options, Central is included in the equation. You will also see pros and cons of each option, and then you'll see costs listed at the top, a range of costs. And so I just wanna go through a couple of these. If you look to the far left column, the cons, I wanna point out capacity. So from a capacity standpoint, even if you are using the existing gym to add eight additional classroom spaces, it's too low of capacity to meet our target of 1,150 students. And there's little space at Benton to add in addition. We also have small parking sizes there, parking spots. So to add on, we would be dipping into the parking. And so shift now to the far right side column with Lafayette High School. Again, from a capacity standpoint, we can get closer to the 1,150 requirement. But the recommendation from DLR was that this would be a short-term solution, not an ideal long-term solution. And then I also wanted to point out, the recommendation from DLR with Lafayette was to expand the cafeteria space and also include more parking to accommodate those students. In both of these situations, ADA compliance is an issue, and so I just wanted to point that out. The other thing I wanna point out on capacity, so if you look at all three options here, let's go Benton underneath cons. So if you go to the third bullet, it talks about conservative maximum enrollment calculations. And when you see that five out of seven on the first two bullets there underneath that, and then the next one, it says six out of seven, that means teachers are teaching five out of seven courses, and six out of seven is teaching six out of seven courses. Right now, our high schools teach six out of seven courses. But I also wanna draw your attention to that where it says 28 students per class. That would be very difficult to do with scheduling, to have it that balanced. So for example, if you have an honors course at Benton High School, you're typically not going to have 28 kids. You may have 14 kids, you may have 16 kids. So those kids have to be shifted to another section. So it does make it pretty unlikely that that would be an option between Central and Benton combo. One thing that DLR did point out was we do have Hyde Elementary right next to Benton High School, and that could be used to combine facilities. And so you can see on there, on the capacity standpoint, if you have six out of seven, you're towards 1,680 students. Of course, that's again, if 28 students fit perfectly into each course section. The downside of that obviously is Hyde Elementary and relocating those students to a different facility. We have not gotten into the weeds as far as feeder patterns and schools that would be closing. We were simply tasked with coming up with those two options, pros and cons, and the costs. And so I know you guys have had an opportunity to look at this, and DLR is here if you have specific questions. But we would love to have some dialogue with our board members to see a direction, if you have one right now at this time.
So we, I thought, sorry, hold on, hold on. I thought we were, so we had a plan that had a feeder system at the June meeting? Was it May or was it June? Okay, May. There was...
It was kind of a Central Lafayette combination?
It was Central Lafayette, and then it was, it had the middle schools, it had the elementary schools, am I right? Okay. So I, I thought we were coming back with, okay, if that feeder pattern, if that doesn't work, then how would that feeder pattern move into two high schools, being Benton Central? This feels like we're starting, and I'm not saying there's not, I appreciate the work that's gone into this. I just feel like we've started all the way back over. Because when we, like, we've done all the facilities conversations, we've been talking about this for a long time. So I was surprised when we saw Benton Hyde, and then we acknowledged, where is Hyde gonna go if Spring Garden isn't retrofitted? So I was surprised to see that that was even an option because whenever we've done the facilities meetings, we know if we start at one spot, whether it's elementary- facilities meetings, we know if we start at one spot, whether it's elementary, middle, or high, if we start at one spot, we can't get there. You know what I mean? Like, we can't just look at the middle schools and high schools, because you have to look at the other feeder patterns. So, what are we doing?
I was tasked with looking at the two options, pros and cons, and the costs, so that's what we've done till this point. We have the old plan, but obviously the community shot that down, so I think we have to listen to that, and...
No, I, I understand that, but I feel like we've talked about having a sense of urgency, especially with the finances. And so, I just want to, you know, when people ask me, I'm like, I don't know. Like, what are we doing? Are we, are we, I don't know. And so I guess I would just want to know from the board, are we going to do anything or not?
I have a couple of questions. If you're only looking at this information, is there a recommendation from administration?
So we talked about this in our advisory team last Friday, and we did believe that the Benton-Hide combo would be feasible if we had a long-term plan that included building a new high school in the north. And then Hyde could be used as a swing site, and then you could potentially, we've talked about this in phases with, like, Black County and North Kansas City have done with Benton High School. So if we wanted to have a long-term option, that's something that we've discussed. I'll be honest with you, our leadership team, our district leadership team, we just talked about this today, so I feel like they need a little bit of time to chew on this information. I understand the sense of urgency with our financial situation, I think that we all do, but we also don't want to rush this process without having a detailed plan as far as facilities, staffing, and how that will all play out. But if the board says go, we can go, it's just going to be a rushed process.
Well, I mean, are we able to get a detailed plan? Like, because my only issue is everybody will look at this information and get, and they'll be like, well, I like A, B, or C, and I'm just naming them A, B, or C, just because they're lined out like this. Okay, but we don't actually know any of the details of either. It's like I'm looking at a car and I'm just going to choose because of the color or the price, you know, but I don't really know about the plan. And I'm not able to, you know, speak for anybody else, you know, but I mean, I would like to look at like a feeder system. I want to know where Hyde's kids are going to go. I mean, I'm not able, you know, to look at this and be like, I like this plan, if there's no plan to look at, you see what I mean?
I do know what you mean. We got this information about a week ago, and so to build a true facilities plan, that's going to take some time. Our last plan, in my opinion, was a one-pager, and the feedback that I received from several people in our community is that it wasn't detailed enough. It didn't talk about what classes, how many classrooms you would have, how many sections each classroom would be. And so I would love to have a plan that's more detailed, but that's going to take time.
So I have a couple of questions, too. So just to be sure, we did, and I know I kind of asked you already, you did look at Central, too. I know it's only going to be like 100 more students, DLR went through them as well, but I mean, right now, parking and drop-off and the hallways are all congested, and there is nothing needed at Central?
There wasn't anything on the report. Might try and chime in?
Well, I know that in the short term, as far as just what is the quickest and most cost-effective way to get to two high schools, we're assuming that Central has little to no work in the short term. In the longer term, to make that a viable option as a, as a long-term, large-capacity high school, you definitely want to do some work to that, increase parking, do some upgrades into the facilities. But for the short term, for the purposes of the pros and cons list in front of you, this is just, if you're trying to move to two high schools within the next two to three years, these are the, these are the quickest ways to get there with the shortest amount of work and the least amount of expense.
And no matter what option we pick, we're going to need more money, correct? We're going to have to ask for money.
Possibly. Now, we've talked about Lafayette High School. Right now, they have three lunch gyms, and they could go to four. We were at four some years ago, and I think that would assist with the overcrowding at lunch during COVID. We also use the practice gym. It's not ideal, but it's something that we could do to cut costs.
I'm just thinking, out of the three, this might be a good opportunity to get your community input, too.
And what do you do if you're not able to get any more money?
We have to do something.
But I guess, so my question is by when? By when? Because I was under the impression, and I've read the emails, I've heard the conversations, like, we need to do something by next year with no money. But now we have discussions that it's going to cost money and it's going to take multiple years. So I'm just confused. Do we need to do something? My opinion has always been, we have to do something with what we have. I'm not saying that we don't pursue more, you know, a new school, I'm not saying that at all, but just like Mr. Schott said, every year that we don't do anything, these kids are not getting the same opportunities. And some people may be okay with kids having fewer opportunities than others in our own district, I am not. So the longer that we talk about, you know, we're going to do something in 2026, but by the time we get it ready, it's going to be 2028, I mean, that's, that's three years, that's a whole cohort of kids going through our high schools nearly. And I don't know how we're going to make up 60% of that vote. So, we can keep planning, but I mean, this, I don't think it's, we, this has not been a short-term plan. We've been talking about this for 20 years. Intensively, we've been talking about it for three years. We can go back and look at all of the meeting minutes, we can look at all of the reports that have been given. We have all the information, but we need to move forward, or, or just decide that we're not going to.
Madam President, I, I really appreciate, you know, the board's patience, but also the public's patience as we weigh through this, because this is a very new situation for everybody involved. And so I think patience and communication's key. But you know, I got to tell you, I want to, I want to really echo Mr. Schott's comments. For, for me, in the past, what we've done is, is talked about thinking big and building new, and building one, or building two. And so now we find ourselves having run that course in a much different position. And so, in effect, we have a lot of control over what we do. Now, obviously, if we're going to spend a significant amount of money, we'll have to go to the public, which is great, but we, we have a lot of control over what we do. I think what I've always wanted to see was a, a complete plan of feeder systems and buildings, and then translate into, that into savings. So, so we need a plan that says, okay, here's what we're going to do at all three levels of education, here's what we're going to do by building, and here's what that will do to help us get back to a good financial position, specifically 20% reserves. So, it's all new to all of us. With that said, is it a fair ask of the board to say to administration, bring us that plan? I mean, you know the buildings you have, you know the staff you have, you, you, you understand education way better than I do. And so, is that a fair ask? Or is there some other method by which the details of the plan, that I know the public wants to, you know, get, get in front of us?
I think that can, I'm just saying it's going to take a little bit of time to work out all of those pieces.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll work on it, I will.
I get the concept that we're, everybody wants to work their way up from the high school down for the feeder pattern, but still, if we're stuck on the high schools, we can still fix other things, we can fix the redistricting, we can fix the middle schools. I mean, if we're stuck at the high schools, why don't we take care of what we can?
We've already done all of this.
We really need to look at system-wide.
We've done the whole thing.
Rather than bits and pieces.
It's all, I mean, and I get, it is, it is really difficult when we have, and I'm not saying this, that this is, you know, I'm not saying this to, to be disrespectful. It is hard when we haven't, haven't an election every single year, because people are coming on. I wouldn't expect people to watch every facilities meeting when they're not on the board, some people do. But we've, we've gone through all of this. We've gone through, let's try at the elementary level, didn't work, because then where are they going to go? We've tried at the middle school level, didn't work, because where are they coming? Where are they going? So if, it sounds like, and I guess I would want to know from the board, and I'm sure you want to know from the board, are we still committed to going to two schools? I mean, I think we all are, there's still conversation, people making comments about, are you or are you not? I think we still are. And on that, we know the schools that we have, and we know how much money we have. So I don't know what, I mean, I, I get that this is uncomfortable, and this is not an ideal state at all, but we knew that when we went into the April election, that if it didn't pass, we're going to have to make hard decisions that are not ideal. So let's do something.
Dr. McGinnis, let me ask it another way. Is, is there some way we could help you? You know, it's not, sometimes it's not clear to me, you know, is this, is this the board that needs to try to dream up the details? I don't think so, just because we're not next to it every day. But, but can we, can we help you? You talk about, I know it's a lot, it's a big workload, how long it might take, but how can we help you get to the plan?
I don't know that you can as the board. I think DLR and having community input, and then just our leaders, our team, and even some staff on that, maybe a couple of board members, too, a part of that committee process like we had before. The downside of that, we have the facilities committee, right? And what you have is a lot of different opinions, and then we didn't move anywhere. And so I think having DLR involved would be helpful in that, in discovering the appropriate feeder patterns.
I think largely the problem, and I know that we talk a lot about community input, and, and, you know, we're going to do the town halls, and I think we all try to be out and present in the community to, to get the information. I think anything that we do is going to be unpopular. It's not going to be, nobody is getting everything that they want, we're not getting a new school. But based on our academics and our hiring and our money, I mean, this, I think the writing has been on the wall for this for a long time, and we've just never moved forward, because it's not, it's not going to be comfortable, it's not going to be fun. But, but something needs to happen, and we have, to me, I feel like we have all the information that we need to make a decision, we just need to move forward.
I agree.
I would just say, if we're voting on that next month, that'd be in September, and so that gives us six, seven months to get things all ironed out as far as where staff will go, what buildings will close, feeder patterns, and just be mindful of...
Can that happen? I guess I always envisioned this, and I get it, I've thought about, how, how in the heck are you going to move things, just even the physical movement of, of items? Can we look at a plan that says, here is the plan, pre-K through 12, here's the plan, here are the phases we are going to take? And then if you want to add on to that, every year or so, we put out a bond issue for a new school, so be it, but I feel like there has to be some movement, and there has to be, okay, first we're going to do, I know we've talked about Pershing, we've talked about Hyde and Spring Garden, what those look like, and then doing a phase to it. Because you're right, it's eight months to do all this, probably isn't enough, but there needs to be some movement.
I agree with phases, completely.
Dr. Headscroft, you were starting to say something.
Well, I, I want to apologize if you felt like we were starting off a little bit with the, you know, July board meeting, let us know where reserve ratios were at a 10%. I felt like there might be a reevaluation of the situation. And so what we wanted to do is show, you know, the three different scenarios, and with the LRS assistance, look at what the cost structure would be for some of those, and just to show the board, hey, if it was a Benton High School only for the amount of money to get that facility ready for those kids, we would need to go out for a bond. Where with the Benton-Hide combination and Lafayette High School combination, we'd be able to handle that within our own operating budget. And so just with that type of information, to be able to help with the new information about the reserve ratio was kind of the goal there. So, if you felt like I started over, I apologize. I also, you know, coming out of January, don't have all of the back information, although I have a lot of it, trying to, you know, watch all the board meetings and get all the documents, I don't have 100% of it. So, we can certainly bring back detailed information for every single scenario we have here, all three, with feeder pans, feeder patterns and everything laid out, or if one was eliminated tonight, or whatever type of information you want to see that would help us move forward.
Is there, so is there a reason why, you know, we, I feel like we had a lot of this in the long-range plan that was prepared ahead, I guess we approved that, I don't know, September of last year? I don't know. And then we took that into option A, we pass for a new school, and then if it doesn't pass. We had all of that information. Is there a reason why we can't go back to that? Just say, here was the plan?
We could, but we were tasked with looking at Central-Benton.
And I, and I understand that. I guess my question then is, can we take what we've already created, which spent, took a lot of your guys' time already, took a lot of DLR's, DLR's time already, can we take that plan and then look at, okay, with, how would that have to be revisited or changed if we do a Benton-Hide? Which, I mean, I understand it would, because you're going to have to change Spring Garden, I don't know where you're going to do with elementary schools. But it sounds like we already had this, and then we're kind of like, well, if we do Benton-Hide, we got to throw that, we got to throw away all that, all that whole plan, and the time, and the money that it took to make that plan, which sounds eerily familiar to what we typically do. Or can we move forward?
I was going to ask, okay, so what other information are you needing in order to move forward? And then to, Hedge Court's question, if you look at the plan, so you're looking at the money amount, in all honesty, you should just grab the Plan A, since we cannot afford that on our own, and look at a detailed model for Plan Number B and Z.
Well, and can we, so the long-range plan that we already had in place had the final desired state by school, by building, a map with new boundaries for every, for elementary, middle, it had all of that. I guess to me, if we're going to change from the final, the end being Central Lafayette, then I would need to see another plan that has Benton-Hide that can still work. But in the meantime, I, I don't see convincing evidence to not move forward with the original plan. Because I don't know, I don't know what you do with Hyde.
Wasn't that part of the community's issue of saying no to that?
I don't know.
So they come up with something else.
But I...
Because it didn't pass, so it's a, I like the idea of going back and getting fuller information for this plan, for Benton-Hide, because we are told that Lafayette is not a long-range plan, it's still a short range. So if there's something better, just get a fuller plan, put those things on paper, the routes, the redistricting, all of that, what it looks like.
And I think we can do that. The Benton-Hide option, I would tell you, from my just conversations, I don't think any of these buildings are super sustainable, from the conversations that we've had. But we can do that, and you can compare it to the Lafayette-Central option that we had before. My only thing would be, that plan was about two pages, and so I think our community wants to know more than just that. I think they want to know, what does a classroom size look like? How many classrooms are in that building? So I think there's some additional information that we would need to add to make that so to our community, and at least inform them of where we're going.
I, I like the, I said in the previous meeting, that I like the idea that we, we retain Benton. I think as our community, that we've always been a longer community, and I think that that's going to best meet the distribution need of our community. What I don't know, I, and I appreciate the creativity of the Benton-Hide solution. What I don't know is, what's it going to take to get 1,200, 1,250 students to the Benton-Hide? You know, what, I think that, I think that part of the feeder system does need to be fleshed out a little bit, says, does that make, does that mean Truman gravitates to Benton? You know, what are the implications at the middle school level? I do think it's interesting that the complication, the, the safety resource officers clearly identified that the best way for them to support was identifying the elementary schools that naturally feed towards Benton. And, and I, and, and that they see the city separated that way. I, I like the fact still that we're looking at retaining Benton, even as a medium-to-long-term plan with Central... Even as a medium to long-term plan with Central, assuming that we don't pass a bond, we still need to get to two schools.
Correct.
And the, and the best positioning of two schools are those two locations. And, and this is one piece that says, it's possibly doable. The question, I think though, our ballot is, how would we feed that? Where would the Hyde students go? We just added really nice classrooms, thanks to the community at Hosea. I got a chance to see those dedicated, the kids are excited about those. But I think we, we need to see, how do we feed those schools? And what other unseen modifications are there going to be required to do that? I had somebody say, and I'm not asking you to do a fourth thing, by the way, but I had somebody say, should we, you know, in this kind of a model, you know, should we take a look at Hyde being the middle school? And, and that campus being more of a middle school, high school combination? I don't know how, I don't know what Hyde can handle in terms of people. Is, is the Benton, is the South End freshman big enough to fill Hyde? Or are we going to leave a lot of capacity there? Should we look at a solution that says, we need, we need to get Hyde filled up more than just what the ninth graders would do?
So Hyde has an optimum capacity of 420 kids, but I'll tell you, I believe that's our oldest building.
Yeah, that would have been my concern, because I know we've talked about that one as being the, one of the toughest buildings, you know, as far as condition and stuff. So yeah. Again, I could go a lot of different directions, but we've got to keep our eye on the overall money ball, right? So if we say, well, okay, look, go Benton and Hyde because these numbers look pretty good in front of us tonight, I'm not so sure that translates into overall district efficiencies that we need to, 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 to get us out of the financial hole that we're in.
Right. So what we can do is come up with the feeder systems, what our options are with the Benton and Hyde combo compared to what we have for Lafayette and Central. So our team can, can do that, so you have a little bit of a comparison. We haven't, like I said, we've had this information for just days. So we've thrown together some pros and cons based on the DLR data, but we will need a little bit more time to look at feeder patterns for Benton and Hyde. We're happy to do that.
And, and, I realize I'm one of the new people you're probably referring to, but, and I take no offense to that, by the way, because that's just a fact. The, but when I saw it with the bond issue, I saw what it was with the, with the new South End school and then what would happen at the North End. I didn't see, I didn't see Plan B that said, what's the Lafayette-Central redistricting? Where, where the folks from Hyde and Hosea go to school? And where do they go to middle school and where do they go to high school?
But that's in the plan. That's, that's written in the plan, I think we can pull it up.
Yeah. Well, I saw it certainly for the South End school and the North End school, long-term plan. But I, I think that, I think that what we're on the track here to figure out, I'm not just looking at those dollars by any means. I said this before the dollars came in. I think the best position that we're in is to have a South End option and a North End option.
Well, and I think every, I mean, I would agree with that. But where our buildings are and the status of our buildings and, you know, that we can't change. So I, I am just concerned that we have a whole plan that already has building use. It has an additional, it solves the pre-K issue where we are currently busing kids from County Line down to Lake Contrary. It solves that with the use of Pershing as a pre-K. It has Eugene Field as a gifted and talented building. There were a lot of good things in that plan and it feels like we are abandoning that plan or, or at least looking away from that plan because we're so obsessed with high schools. And again, this, this issue in this district, and to Mr. Schott's points, he, he was right that there aren't equal issues in high schools. But he didn't mention, what is also true is that we don't have equality throughout the district because of, because of enrollments, because of boundaries. So I'm, I, I am hoping that we will use the money and the time that we've already spent and move forward, because it feels, it feels like we're kicking the can again.
Well, I agree with that. I think that our staff and our community, they want to know what's going on. Like, they're sick of waiting too, so we have to do something. But I do like that you looked at this because even, I know you guys have Lafayette-Central plan, but again, I'm curious, telling you, Benton isn't better shaped than Ohio yet. So at the same time, we got to think of a long-term, because what if we don't get a new high school passed in the future? I mean, you have to think about that. So to me, temporary is not the best way to think of it. We got to think long-term.
But I don't see it as temporary at all. I mean, to me, the con of what do you do with Hyde is a glaring issue. What do you do with the Hyde? You can't send them to Hosea. Like, I know we put on, you know, we've got the trailers out, but that was because we were using trailers. So you can't push them to Hosea, you can't push them to Spring Garden. The first plan also addresses the Spring Garden issue, that it was built as an elementary. So now you're actually giving the middle school kids something through Benton of larger amenities and a football field, those types of things. So we, that first plan addressed all those things. So I, I don't see it as a temporary issue. I see it as, this is where we need to go. And then hopefully, if someday we can get 60% of the vote, then that's fine, but.
And again, I do think community input is going to be important too, because it is a community at the whole making this decision.
I would agree. Are we able to get a draft of each of the two plans, like a feeder system in a couple of weeks at the work session? Or is that too soon?
I would have to have that in a week to get it on the agenda.
What?
I can, I can do my best, but I would have to have it in by Monday to get it on the agenda, Tuesday.
I would like you to take your time and come up with something.
To get it on the work session agenda, you'd have to have it by Tuesday?
Yes.
Now, to get it to you guys.
Well, could we at least get an idea of what you'd do with Hyde? I mean, to me, I can't wrap my brain around how you even answered that question down there.
Yes, for me, I would like to know what the will of the board is at this point, as far as what you want from our administrative team for the next meeting.
Admin said about the plan in the middle is your best choice.
Yes, again, district leadership.
We would like an idea of how you would go about that plan. A start. Because the problem is, if there's nothing in a couple of weeks, it will be nothing in a month. In a month, it's going to be an informational item. If there's nothing in a couple of weeks. And that means it's not going to be any action until like October.
Well, I feel like we have gotten, you know, we talk about we need more community input, but we did, we don't even talk about vision forward anymore. We did a whole vision forward plan and we got community input. You know, we can say, you know, it didn't pass because people didn't want this or they didn't, nobody, nobody knows specifically why it didn't pass. I could argue, it didn't pass because they liked Plan B so well. You know, I don't know. I have no idea, none of us will know. But at the end of the day, we are all elected and we need to move forward with something because I don't know that we have three years. It hasn't sounded like fiscally we have that much time.
I'm just afraid of, a year from now, it's going to be this combo again. Because it was like that a year ago. And then it was like that a couple of years ago. And so I'm just afraid we're not going to do anything at all.
I don't mind. I think we all agree that we want to move forward. I think as a board, we all agree, we need to do something. So I think giving a month and coming back with a plan in a month would be acceptable.
When we talk about a plan, do you, so when I, when I'm thinking, we want a plan, to me, we already have a plan, right? So we have the plan that goes Central Lafayette, that has the middle, it has all of that. Are we asking for another, a second plan, a second option that's Benton-Hide? That has all the same components?
I don't know that, whatever the others feel like they want to.
Ms. Lanning, I think you're referring to Plan A. We have all of those details ironed out. If we were to have a new high school in the South. Plan B was going to Central Lafayette and the details weren't all worked out. So Plan A, we had a, we had a plan. Had feeder systems, we had the new schools, what would be repurposed at Pershing and Field. But Plan B was not with Central and Lafayette.
The other thing that I would say.
We're still able to choose. Choose the amenities from Plan A though, into the plan in the middle, right?
Here's what we will do. And what I think I'm hearing you say is, you want to see feeder patterns from the Benton-Hide combo compared to the Lafayette-Central combo and what all of our buildings would look like.
Yes, Mike, are you wanting cost at that point, Mike, or?
Yeah, look, I, I just want to get five years down the road and realize, yeah, you know, we didn't really save all the money that we needed to save. And so we've got to find a way to put long-term dollars and staffing and facilities costs into these two options, right? So absolutely, we need to know, okay, here's how we would do the boundaries and the buildings and where, where kids would go to school, how many classrooms. But that needs to translate. I mean, what we're charged with as a board is fixing this financial issue we have. And so that needs to translate into, you know, this is, this is the recommendation. And we believe it'll get us there financially because.
I agree 100%. That's what I was, that's what I was going to say. And I was going to say, hopefully, Hedgecort can help us with that. We need a, we need some kind of projection that says, is this going to, how much is going to? The community really wants to know that. There's certain parts of the community that say, let's say, three schools. And we know financially, that's going to be tough, but we need to be able to show, what's the financial improvement going to be going to two schools?
Agreed.
Two high schools. And then, and then the associated feeder schools. And I agree with you, I think, I think we need to have that feeder system planned and it may need to be ironed out some for both of the options, Lafayette-Central and Benton-Hide-Central.
And I think what I, what I'm hoping that we can get to is, okay, feasibly, this is what we have to do with buildings, with feeder. This is what solves some of those vision forward issues that we've been talking about for a long time. And then as we say, okay, this is really the only feasible way to do this or this gives us more of those vision forward things, you know, ticked off the list. Then we start figuring out the, the details. Because if we don't start somewhere, we're, we're never going to, we're never going to go.
So I think we're just, we're asking for a more complete, detailed.
Feeder systems?
Yes.
Any other pieces to those points?
And, and, and some projected savings.
Yes. Like financial.
Closures of buildings, things like that?
Well, yeah, at least, at least at the top level of, of the, the two high schools versus three high schools, at least at that level. But, but it probably needs to go as far as we can.
Okay, we will work on that. Thank you.
Are there any more questions, comments on this topic?
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGinnis. Okay, Ms. Student?
Happy Monday. First of all, I want to thank you guys for ever being present at convocation and for being present in our buildings as well. I know I saw some of you at Friendly Faces Friday over at Hosea. In my report tonight, what you'll find is the three-year student achievement trends from 2023 to 2025. And it's displayed on the screen. You saw at our last board meeting, the overall projection from a district level. But what we did provide was a ranking by building according to proficiency and the access mastery level. We want students to be on grade level. And so you'll see that report. Our team is, again, analyzing these performance trends, highlighting both growth and areas of need. And I know that Dr. Reed and Dr. Adams have data consults. This report was shared with principals on their first day back at our instructional leader network. And then it was shared with teachers on August 15th at our professional learning. And we asked for their input in solutions being oriented. You will also find in my report, the St. Justice School District Teacher Evaluation Plan for 25-26. And so how are we investing and developing our educators? And I'm grateful for Mr. Correll and Heather Adams in the new system for the evaluation of professional staff through our platform frontline. And you'll see a detailed report there with timelines for building leaders and providing effective feedback to develop, again, our teachers. The other thing you will see is, I know Dr. Evans and Ms. Kessel were honored for their promising practices for PLC as a school. But we are trying to get really strong with that at a district level too. And so the next piece is really a response to leading a results orientation and rallying our educators who serve in our classrooms to be at the forefront and be in the know. And what we provided was a schedule for you for district department chair meetings. And that job description was revised to include a monthly meeting with our department chairs so that we can run them to the table, share that results orientation with them and have them provide input and what tools and resources they might need to have. And so we, we meet monthly. The first meeting was held on August 12th and we brought elective and the four core together. So the same practice will be facilitated through our elementary PLC leadership teams. I'm, again, very thankful for PDC and knowing that that set component or a system we need to have at the elementary level too. And the last item that you will find there is, I've updated the district professional learning plan. And on August 15th, gosh, Tabitha Keizer and her instructional coaches did a fantastic job of leading really content-driven professional learning. And we started the implementation of our new ELA core resource with the Benchmark Advance. And so I was grateful to be able to have a core resource to support our ELA instruction moving forward this year. So that is going to be critical in the move in literacy scores. So now it's just supporting teachers in this first year with this core resource and then helping principals oversee, what does it look like when I enter the classroom? What's that framework look like? Any questions?
We are serious about academics. We are really very targeted in our approach and I'm thankful for the academic service team and our building leadership team. Again, I can't speak, but we're leading with the three drivers, you know, having and strengthening tier-one instruction and making sure tier-one instruction is first very strong. And then having collaboration with our teachers, that's ever-important. And the third one is remaining on the prize, a results orientation. We can teach, right? But our students' learning, and that's the key question that we're, we're reflecting on right now. And if you look at our student outcomes, you know, we, that's something that we'll hit really hard moving into 25-26.
You know, I do want to make a comment. One, I, and I, this is a little bit of carryover. You know, I, I spoke to Dr. McGinnis and others. The most important thing that happened last week was the start of school. And I congratulate the team on the convocation, the energy in that room and the excitement among the teachers. And then I, I got to experience a little bit at Hosea and man, that was, that was exciting for me to see those kids come in. And I, so I compliment you guys on your preparation. In the midst of, of some of these other issues we've got going on, I appreciate that you focused on that very most important thing and that is the students and the teachers. And these academic scores, you, you all know, they're super, they're super important to me and probably to every parent out here. And so I, I'm, I'm not at all saying this is backseat to the other things we just had a rousing discussion about. It's so important and I appreciate the things that you're doing to work towards making this happen. And it'll be interesting to me to see, as the year goes on, if we, if we can get updates that says, it looks like this trend is going to, is going to create a difference. I know in some ways, we won't be able to see the difference until the end. It's harder to measure probably. But it'll be, it'll be certainly something to celebrate if we can see some of those pieces having the positive impact that we're hoping they'll have. hoping they'll have. So I, I, I know that's more of a comment than a question, but thank you for what you're doing.
I'm grateful that you said that. We are working on an internal progress monitoring system where we created a live data dashboard where, um, we use our predictive data to be public facing. Um, and so we can kind of monitor that ahead of time. We, um, the, the program Mastery Connect that we use for our, um, assessment, um, will, um, provide that opportunity for us to keep a, like, a little watch over, how are things, um, going in the classroom, along with walkthroughs, along with serving in, um, observations. So I'm grateful. Thank you for saying that.
And we just approved the new curriculum this year, so, and that takes effect this year, correct?
Yes. Thank you, guys.
Okay, Mr. Carell?
Okay. Kind of skipped it a little bit.
Financials, sorry.
You don't want me to talk about those?
Or me on the first note. You have your July financials in front of you. Of the three documents, you have your typical financials you see, and then you also know that you have the bond project tracking document. Um, also in the board agenda, there is the link to the website, uh, where that is updated in real time. So if anybody would like to go, uh, look at that, uh, between board meetings, they can see, uh, how that's tracking. Uh, but I wanted to make sure you guys saw that. We did add some information to that bond tracking document. Uh, if we can go ahead and pull that up real quick, um, to show the change orders separated out from the original bids. So, um, it shows your bid amounts and also it shows the change orders in that, um, area that was bid. For example, the top one we have there is the athletic fields for turf, to see what that total comes to and then the amount spent today and the balance remaining. So that will hopefully give you guys a little bit better perspective as different change orders come, um, in front of you to prove, to, to have more of a tracking of, okay, what have we done in the past and how much does that bring the total to? So hopefully that helps, um, with that. I felt like, you know, that was something you guys wanted to see in that document and so we got those added in. So just a FY on that. Um, on the, uh, July financials-
I just got a quick question on that.
Sure.
I noticed on the age that upgrades that, um, that, um, there was a big project at Edison, an expensive project. It's not on there because it was a part of the bond promises, that's the-
That is correct.
And so, um, I guess the, the question is, is other capital expenditures that were having, that aren't covered under the bond, my understanding is we've had some slippage on those and the net result is, is that we're, we're over-expensed on our, on our capital projects.
That's correct. So examples of those projects that weren't in the bond, that just came out of our, our capital projects, Fund Four, um, you know, was overspent and so we had to transfer more money from Fund One and Two to cover those. And so that's what brought our operational reserve down to 10.02%.
Yeah.
And that's where the Bleacher project is going to come out of, Fund Four?
Yes. On your financials, one thing I did want to point out, if you look at federal revenue for FY '26 on the first page, you will see $6.181 million in federal revenue. Uh, that's a result of the 2324 federal dollars being deposited in our account. And so I just wanted to, uh, make sure that there, more is aware that half of the dollars, um, that weren't there from the, uh, June 30th cutoff for ASBR has been deposited in July and then, uh, we expect, um, the remaining hopefully in the next month. So, uh, I'll continue to give you updates on that. When, when all of it is deposited, I will certainly point that out in the reports. Any questions I can answer on July financials?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, a second.
Thanks, Chesley. Okay, whenever you're ready. Mr. Richmond?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Chesley?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
All approved. Okay, the bills?
Make a motion to approve the bills.
I should note, Kenny, but it's all right, but if you know-
A motion, a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, whenever you're ready. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesley?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes? All approved? Thank you, Dr. Hetchcorl. Now, Mr. Carell?
Thank you. All right, um, I have submitted the first note report and you also have supplemental report at your stations as well. If you do not have any questions on those, um, it was pretty straightforward. Um, I ask that you, or a motion to approve?
I have a question. So the majority of these are, appear to be retroactive. There's one also from March, one from May, a couple from July. What, why is that?
Those would be because they would have resigned and then we filled that late. So it would have been open. Does that make sense? So they've been open for a while and then we filled it, um, and placed it individual-
We didn't approve, so like the, there's a March 11th, uh, the March 11th, the 5/21, we're approving those resignations upon their replacement?
Are you on the page five?
It was on... Well, there's transfers, so if you're on, um-
Are you on the supplemental or the?
I'm on the regular.
Okay.
That's on the line.
Yeah, so-
So these are, these are not, um, resignations or separations. These are appointments that are effective. So the first page, we have appointments effective 8/13. I'm not sure when that went on.
Right, so these individuals would have resigned on those dates and then when nutrition, because that's what most of them are, is a, is a nutrition, correct? The one on 3/11 is a nutrition on page five.
Well, even on page one of the certificated, we have some staff that following appointments, the appointments of the following personnel are recommended for approval. This couple people were hired and they're, they took effect on August 13th.
Correct, those, that was the first day of their contract.
So typically we do it before, right? Or am I remembering things?
It's, it's either, we either wait, um, and approve them now and then we have open positions once school's already started. So we go ahead and allow them to work.
Yeah, I get that. I just, uh, tell me if you're wrong. I typically see it before.
I think the question is really, why are we approving things after the fact and not before?
I think I brought this up in June, that we had, like in June, we had some people that were hired, worked seasonally and then stopped working and we were just approving them. But in other instances, we're having special meetings to approve people before.
So, Mr. Carell, crack me hard, well, what I think is happening here is we have openings for teachers and then we have taken other teachers from other buildings, placed them into those spots because we haven't filled it.
That could be part of those, yes.
Okay.
Yes. I would say the other part is, again, if we have openings, for example, on page five, we have an individual, um, it's 3/11 of 25. So when nutrition has hired these individuals, they're hiring them as subs, but on our end, we have to show who they're replacing so it doesn't look like it's a new position because it's not a new, it's not an added position. So we have placed that individual with that name, but they started on 8/13.
Right. And I would just have expected for us to approve it, an 8/13 hire on, at the July meeting.
But they weren't hired until recently.
Right, but we would, we would be approving to hire them. Is that not what we're-
But if we don't, if, if we wait to approve them, then we're going to be sitting with open positions until we have a board meeting.
Yeah, you just, it's timing.
I wonder if I, so attached is policy GCI and it says, "The board directs the superintendent to annually assess the professional staff he needs at the district and reassign staff as necessary to meet those needs. Although the superintendent will take the employees' expressed preference, um, may reassign staff members at any time, including after a contract has been signed or during the school year. Board approval is required when a reassignment results in a change to the employee's compensation, benefits or contract." So is that sort of my policy? How do we get where we're at?
No, I think it's more, and I may be wrong, it just appears as if it's easier to wait until a board meeting to approve them all at one time.
And that's where, that's where my confusion is. Are we approving them before they happen? Because we've had special meetings specifically to hire people, to get board approval to hire people. And I'm familiar with how we've done it and how other districts do it, is you get offered a position pending board approval, but these are all, these are mostly retroactive.
So I would say if we didn't have board approval, we'd have no math teacher at Lafayette High School and we would have serious needs.
Yeah, but remember we have a special meeting, like we, and so we, I mean, I assume we know when we're posting a position, we're interviewing for a position, we're offering-
And some of these already have contracts. They're already contracted with us, so we're just transferring them?
They've had a contract before, 8/13.
I would say, let's, let's say that we don't have any openings for sort of, certain type positions, which is good, but let's say we have an opening in math right now and we hired them tomorrow, we would either have to have a special session to approve that tomorrow or we wait till the next board meeting. I, if, if you want to have a special session every-
That's just what we've been doing.
Sure.
That's my, that's my question. That's where I'm not understanding. Are we requiring board approval before those changes happen or are we not doing that? Because we've had special meetings, but we've had, we've had that. I'm not saying I want to do that, but we also know. But if I'm the only one that, that has a, takes issue with it, then I'm just one person?
So my, my policy, we're okay?
We are.
It's my interpretation.
As, as long as it's a transfer, transfer or reassignment because there's no change to the contract, compensation or benefits.
We have conversations on new positions, I, I know, in a little bit different, uh, you know, ahead of time type of light. Maybe that's what you're thinking of with?
People are not okay if it's a new hire and avoiding the policy, right?
If it's a new hire, I think it needs approved before because it would kind of follow through this, uh, you know, change in compensation, change in spend of the district.
Well, for example, on page two, there's a position that started today, that's a new position that we're approving at the end of the day.
And if that's what you want to do, we're going to run into-
It's planning.
It's going to be a lot of meetings just because, I think, career professionals, custodial staff.
And they will not be able to start, which could be a week.
Right, but you just said the policy is if it's not a new position, then we can do it. But this is on page two, there's a new position that started today without board approval. So how, if I'm the only person that has a concern about it, then I'm the only person and that is fine.
Mike, what policy are you looking at that says a new position?
Yeah, so, uh, the transfer of reassignments is GCI. And, uh, I'm kind of digging through some of the other ones. Supports staff recruiting and hiring is GDC. And, uh, hiring the board will fill a vacancy after receiving a recommendation from the superintendent or designee. All candidates will be selected on the basis of qualifications, training and ability. Uh, all applicants will be promptly notified once a position has been filled. So it doesn't really give timing, right? It doesn't really say you have to have that approved before you fill it, but-
On GDC two, it says the board delegates to the superintendent the authority to make decisions on the hiring, promotion and/or demotion or termination of all non-contractual support staff.
Yeah, you're right. Second, second paragraph.
Yeah.
I'm just referring to what we have been doing is prior to start, but if we don't want to do that, then that's fine.
You just let me know what she doesn't want to do.
I think we're good about policy.
I think we're following policy.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, I'll reach out and notice, check if we are really interpreting it correctly and legally.
That's fair.
Okay.
In the meantime, are we in need of a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Okay, would you call the vote? Was that Mike Fitzpatrick?
No, it's Tom.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Williams?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesley?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes six, six, one? Okay, action items. Hetchcorl?
So we presented the data for the tax rate, um, to be set at 4.9163, which is the same tax rate that it was set for, uh, the previous year. And we're happy to take any questions, um, before you move.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion a second?
Whenever you're ready.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yep.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Chesley?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
And the motion passes all approved? Okay, Dr. McGinnis?
Sure, so this is something we talked about, I'm sorry. This is something we talked about at the work session a couple of weeks ago, updating the policy to include all assistant superintendents, director of HR and director of communications residing within district boundaries. So I would just take any questions if you have any.
What's the implementation going to be on this? I know we talked about that last time.
Uh, we talked about brand following in, folks who are already working with us.
I'll motion. I'll second. I have a motion, a second. I have a question, though.
Sure.
Um, like, okay, so is this added into their contracts?
Uh, it could be.
Well, well, I'm just thinking, it's no other way to really enforce it if it's not in the contracts?
Well, we could if it's in board policy. And board policy hasn't been enforced to my knowledge. I don't believe that that was in contracts for previous people who did that years ago.
Well, and that's my thing, I mean, it's in the policy, you know, but it was never enforced and then, even if it is enforced, like, I don't know what that actually entails. Like, if there's a person that's in violation, okay, so what do you do? Well, but if it's a part of their contract, isn't that easier to handle? I mean, I don't know.
I mean, we could do that. Not opposed to it at all.
I mean, I'm okay either way. I was just looking at this earlier, like, and I'm just like, it's already in the policy and nobody really-
Well, the language hasn't been clear in the policy. There's rules in there that we don't have.
I know, but if I'm an admin, I know that I'm included in this, on the most part, if I'm like an upper admin, like, if I'm Mr. Carell, I know I'm included in this, you know what I mean? But it doesn't mean that I really have to do it. I don't know, I'm just making it easier for you guys. I'm okay either way, though. What do you think, Mike? I see your mind working.
Well, as I recall, I, I think we just put that in, in the most recent superintendent contract.
It's in mine.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think, I think we're, we're good to do that for future hires.
What do you guys think?
I agree with that.
True.
Okay, any more discussion on that? Okay, if not, is there a motion? Yes, you have a motion. A motion in a second. Thank you. Would you call the vote, please? Yes, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesley?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes all approved? Mr. Carell? And the motion passes all approved. Mr. Correll?
All right, you have hopefully the last round of job descriptions that have been updated. Our departments, our department lead really reviewed those, made some changes based on their knowledge of the positions. Changes are in, excuse me, additions are in red, changes have been crossed out. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer those. If not, I ask for a motion for approval.
What's the rollout of this going to look like? Like, once we approve it, I, I just wouldn't want somebody to be working and you, for someone to say, well, not do your job description, and then say, what are you talking about?
Yeah, so we are revising those through HR currently. I know she's done with, with most of them already, except for the ones you approved in the consent and then this one. And then we will send those to our departments so they can share that information and have to make sure that they are familiar with if there's any changes or any updates on those.
So like the staff that are getting revised job descriptions will get them?
Correct.
Is this for next year?
I would say it's going to be current.
Oh, it's for contracts already signed and we're giving you job descriptions?
Yeah, not much is changing though.
Okay.
I have a motion for approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes all approved. Okay, Ms. Stewart? Are you having someone else do it for you?
Dr. Adams is coming up. I'm here to celebrate the work that we did over the summer. On the, at, one of the action items here, you'll see the K two grade card revision. And Dr. Adams is going to speak to that work. But I did want to give a shout out in that attachment is the writing team that participated in that redesign of the assessment, and I'm grateful for their leadership in this work.
Thank you. I'm excited to share this. This has been a long time coming. The St. Joe's School District K through second grade card revision process began on June 18th and 20th during our assessment and design team professional development in partnership with Northwest RPDC, continued on June 23rd and 24th, and concluded on August 12th, 2025. Guided by policy IF curriculum development, the team completed essential foundational work to align curriculum instruction and assessment. This will strengthen how we communicate student progress toward grade level expectations. Standards-based grading communicates how students perform on clearly defined learning targets or standards. Its purpose is to identify what a student knows and is able to do in relation to those targets. Standards-based grading reports what students should know and be able to do in each core content area at every K through second grade level. So I'm really proud of the teacher and the instructional coach team that really put in the work to accomplish this. And it's a revision of our K through second grade grade cards in the areas of reading, writing, and math. Very thankful for this team, a lot of hard work into it. And so you can see the writing team attached in the board docs and the K one two grade card as well. So entertain any questions at this time? I'd like a motion to approve.
Any discussion?
I have a question. So are there rubrics attached with the grade cards? So each parent teacher say across the district? Because I noticed some of them say, like, this one says the student will apply independently at grade level text. So is there a rubric connected to that? So a three, four across the district is the same four.
So every priority that the grade card is communicating to parents as a target or a standard. There's evidence, there are documents, there's assessment documents, and rubrics, evidence that goes behind that. A lot of it, we try to streamline the assessments that we're already gaining that information from so that we are not over assessing students. So we're really trying to balance our assessment as well. But yes, and then at three, if a kid receives, a student receives a three, that is at grade level, considered at grade level. So we did a lot of proficiency scale work in this document.
Okay, a motion in a second?
I have one more quick question. That, I, I too appreciate the work that took place to get this in position. What about the rollout to the teachers? Has that, does that happen?
Yeah, so September 19th, I was waiting for board approval. There's a mass email going out tomorrow to all K one two teachers and principals explaining and thanking the team for this work with, with the resources attached. September 19th, our national professional development day, there'll be time dedicated to, for K one two teachers and instructional coaches to help facilitate a rollout of this. So, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, would you call the vote, please? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes all approved. Thank you, Dr. Adams. Okay, mister, this is not mister Hedges. Just okay. Good, good. You're good.
Okay.
You're good. I just look at the names on my list. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, I am here to present an extension, contract extension with Buchanan County. I'm sure you guys remember we've had, with the county and the city and the school district, we all put some money in the pot and built a Hilliard Expansion. That ended at the end of December, but we did not spend every penny. So we have been going back to the county and saying, hey, can we have it for this or that? And they have finally said, hey, of what's left, you can have a hundred and fifty thousand towards upgrading the parking lot so that it's still within the same project of that expansion. So the county has written up that hundred and fifty, and I'd like you guys to approve that so that Casey can put in that parking lot.
I have a motion in a second. Any additional discussion questions?
Good job, we're secure on that.
Well, that wasn't me, but thank you.
All right, let's call the vote. Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Yes.
There you go.
And the motion passes all approved. And about the parking lot, Mr. Casey?
Lou, so this is to follow up with that approval there. This is a RFP that we put out for the parking lot itself, in amount of a hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. What it does is around the backside of the building where the large ramp is, it goes up into the new expansion. We ran into many issues with buses being able to get access through there and delivery trucks. What this does is redoes the corner there. It extends the parking lot out to allow for easier access to those buses and everybody to get around. Along with it while we're there, it also replaces some of the curb and the guttering, you know, along with some of the stormwater drainage that's failed.
Casey, who are you paying?
Sorry, what?
Who's the choice? It doesn't say in our.
Oh, League Rover.
League Rover. I make a motion.
Sorry.
I'll second.
So are you, I got a question. Are you going to, that leaves forty-six, forty-five thousand dollars kind of on the table. Is there a plan for that?
We're still, we're currently looking for what exactly we have left. And then there's some other items in the parking lot that could be addressed as well. At this time, we'll put the RFP out. We're just, we're unsure of what the exact cost will be.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes all approved. Thank you, Mr. Casey. And you've got the next one, too, the bleacher repairs.
Correct. Yeah, this is for bleacher repairs at both, are all three Central Lafayette and Benton. This is to utilize a company called Heartland Seating, which is who we've established over the last decade that does all of our repairs. They're local out of Kansas City, family and company. We'd like to use the co-op purchasing agreement with Green Bush. It's a co-op that we haven't used in the past, but that is the purchasing agreement that they've been awarded as well. That does allow piggybacking because it is out of the state. It's actually based out of Shawnee Mission, Kansas. But we are all approved per policy to utilize those out of state organizations if, if we wish. Overall, it's be the, it's around fifty-four thousand dollars.
Okay, are there any questions?
Mr. Housman, what was that last number you gave again? I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
The last number that you gave?
All combined together, it says right around fifty-four thousand.
Okay, so I was a little confused. There were two, there were, there were several documents, two different dates. And so what you're asking?
Correct. Sorry, the original documents, what was it, provided me for budgeting, that was back in May, I believe, or April. And then since then, due to tariffs and everything, the prices have gone up a little bit.
Okay, okay. And is this the first time we're hearing about this one?
It was on the CIP stuff that I originally presented for repairs.
Okay, I must have missed that.
The list I put out for bid.
Let, let me ask you this. Just in light of our current financial situation as a district, how bad a shape are we? In other words, are these things working? They're just a pain? Or are they just non-functional and we don't have enough seats in these?
One says it's non-functional. Then the rest is also ADA compliance that we're required to follow. So it is all, it's either safety or ADA compliance, which is essential.
Okay, understood. Thanks.
And where will that money come out of?
Our CIP fund, fund four.
Something I might add to this. In June of twenty-six, when the preliminary budget was presented, they had a hundred thousand dollars budgeted in fund four for this. And you said that it's came in about fifty-six, fifty-four thousand.
Fifty-four.
So yeah, they did come in under bid for fund four, so which is, which is good news.
Thank you.
Using that co-op.
I have a motion.
All right, I have a motion. Is there a second? I have a motion in a second. Any additional discussion?
I'm going to abstain because I have a first degree relative with a business relationship with Green Bush.
Any additional comments or discussion? If there are any, would you call the vote, please? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning, you're abstaining?
Yep.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes all with one abstention. Thank you, Mr. Casey. I see Dr. Adams.
Yes, me again. Okay, tonight I'd like to bring to you the federal programs evaluation findings and recommendations. The St. Joe's School District conducted a comprehensive evaluation of its federal programs from January through June of 2025, aligned to the district's established program evaluation time. This report incorporates extensive focus group feedback and follows the district's evaluation framework and guidance to provide clear, actionable recommendations in accordance with policy IM as a requirement of our continual evaluation program used to determine program effectiveness and recommendations for continued or improved effectiveness. So key findings of the program evaluation, there were six. And so first would be to develop a succession plan for our federal programs administrative assistant who is retiring at the end of this school year. Also, to consider a software project manager and with that, an implemented centralized workflow software, digital platform. Also, to establish clear protocols and training across departments, foster continual improvement, and to explore free tools such as AI that could help us be more efficient. The resolutions that have already taken place and started would be targeted training to help internal workflow. Those can, those things are monthly meetings that we've started. I know the board has established committees as well. Will begin collaborating and have already started collaborating with our new regional director through DESI. Also, to restructure some duties in physical workspace locations to improve collaboration and communication. We also would like to request more frequent payments from DESI so we can avoid delayed funding and improve our internal processes such as forms, workflow, training with consistent coding, and a perpetual calendar that helps all departments stay on track. So those are the key resolutions. At this time, I would entertain any questions or ask for a motion to approve it as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Now discussion, will I?
In the, I don't know what page it is. It doesn't have page numbers. Page two. So it talks about, I think it says on page one and then again on page two. It talks about we received multiple DESI warnings due to inaccurate and late submissions resulting. So what, how long has that been going on?
So I began in this role two years ago, and since my onboarding, that has occurred. I, I think some of that is a normal natural process that DESI, DESI and school districts, they, they have to cross-check a lot of items that come to them through different departments of our district. And so one issue would be, an example would be like coding. So if they notice that an employee maybe was coded a certain way and then transferred positions, and it didn't get corrected in, with DESI, then they'll shoot back an email and say, hey, would you take a look at this? And so there's, in a district our size, there's just a lot of back and forth cross-checking until they approve. And then once they approve, then they release funds. And so like Dr. Hedgeforth spoke earlier, we've already received one payment and the other, everything's been submitted. We're just waiting on approval, and we should be receiving those funds soon.
And I guess just what, what I would hope would happen in the future, because I don't know that any of us were aware that there were, there were issues with inaccurate, late submissions, the delayed funding. I don't believe we were ever notified of that. I would just ask that if, in the future, if DESI is sending us warnings, and I don't know, are these, are any, were any of these written?
I didn't receive those emails. I don't know if that went to the previous superintendent. I do get emails now that when we get payments, but I don't get any of those.
Typically when, so in the federal programs, state and federal programs that I've worked with, if there's a, a warning, and that's where I guess it's hard to, from this context. If there's a warning, typically that warning's going to come in a really angry letter form the government likes, or is that a lot?
Yeah, no, we didn't have one like that. We had phone calls from DESI where we would pull across, across departments and try to get everybody in the same room. And DESI also has many departments, so there might be somebody from finance there. There might be somebody from Title I. There might be somebody from ECSE. So it takes a lot of key stakeholders at the table. But we, we did have one phone call mid-year, and it was over some core data coding that we needed to get lined out. The others are back and forth emails that I think happen with every school district. And Dr. Hedgeforth, maybe he'll speak a little more to this. He's been in a variety of schools. But some experience with this, just everything has to match and align. And I appreciate that from DESI before they'll approve. But sometimes it can take, sometimes it can take up to forty-five days to get a response after you submit something, and vice versa. So it can be time consuming.
Well, when I saw warnings, I'm thinking like, you know, so that's helpful to understand.
There is more of that than I would prefer. And so we, as a group of departments, have started meeting. We started meeting, I think, in December of last year and put some things in place to try to streamline and make sure everybody's working off the same documents.
Are you all considering the software project manager and software to help fill that in? Is that, is that still a consideration or not?
I, I can say that I have met with one of our programmer analysts and actually Mr. Kelly this week in a meeting, offered some help from his department. We have frontline with HR now that we feel like some of this workflow can move through more productively. But we have to build those systems because it's a new platform. And so we've got some things in motion, but it just takes a little bit of time for us to get built.
My main concern or request, it's like what Ms. Lanning mentioned. If there is a major issue like this, if there was like a memo to the board in a report or like, or like an update, especially if it's missing millions of dollars, if it's going to come like a long time after the fact, or like in another year.
Yeah, so I'll be happy to speak to that. So what I'll do is anytime we submit for payment, I'll let you know when the, just an informational piece, let you know when the window's open for submission, let you know when we submitted, and then keep you updated every month on when those payments might come in. Also, through your financial. when those payments might come in. Also, through your financials, you'll also, I'll point those out in financials and the narrative that we received federal funding from the, you know, twelve to December second submission date as well. Um, also in the report, it talks about, you know, project management and different things like that. Um, you know, I, I kind of look for myself to take on that role. We don't need to hire anybody else. Um, you know, I'm looking, I'll, I'll work with H R and work with, you know, systems to ensure that we're having, you know, a, a timely flow of information. Our core data team's gonna be at the same noise building as everybody else. So I always look at federal programs as a three-legged stool. You have your budget side, uh, you have the core data side, and you have the tier monitoring side. And I think Lacy will do amazing job at the tier monitoring side, and I'm here helping that core data and that budget side, and we'll make sure we get this thing earned out and get a good one, so.
I just want to clarify too, there are no missing funds. We have delayed funds, but they're not missing dollars.
Yeah, that's good.
They are coming in.
And, uh, that's what you mentioned, that we might be able to submit more than once a year.
Right, matter of fact, that's best practice.
Yeah, and, and it's, I thought I read on here, maybe it's every three months or once a quarter or something like that. Is that what our ten bit plan is?
Right, so you can, you can only submit for dollars that are spent. So let's say they open that window in late November or early December, then we can accumulate all the dollars that we spent to that date, you know, from first day of school in August all the way to that date, we can submit. And then, of course, we've submitted everything that we spent, so we gotta give a couple more months for expenses to build up and submit again. So I would say at least, you know, three times as typical, maybe four is what you'd submit in a year for federal funds. And so we had actually, if you look back at, you know, the history of St. Joe, we'd actually done that in the past. Um, it was just this last year where it looked like some things got really hung up on, um, the core data side. And it also didn't help that, you know, in one month, federal funds were frozen, and they couldn't do anything, and then, then the window was open again, it was closed again. So that back and forth also didn't help because DESI couldn't process anything. So it was a combination of things, but I think going forward, we'll, we will make sure the board's informed of when we submit for payment, and then what the resulting deposit is in my financials as well, so.
Great.
And DESI's been good about saying, hey, some of this was our issue because we got some things caught up in our system. It didn't release your me pays into payment. And so they're, they're taking ownership for some of it too, so I appreciate that. But there are definitely things that we can do to be more timely.
I appreciate Dr. Adams, that you're already working on improving these things that have shown up.
Thank you.
And it's already a process. So I appreciate that.
Thanks.
And I just want to say, working with DESI sometimes can be really a challenge because they've had a high turnover of staff. So you might be working with one person one day, and two days later, that person's gone, and then you have to start all over. And getting, communicating with them is also extremely difficult, especially when they have a high turnover of people like that. So I appreciate the fact that it takes patience to work with them as well. So I feel like some of the delays are also created on their side, um, as well. And so I appreciate that patience and that frustration. Sometimes it comes with working with them.
Thank you.
I have one more question. You may have already answered this. So I'm looking at the established clear protocols and training. Do we already have something in place, or-
So some things that we're, we've already put in place, um, we're, next month, we're gonna have training on, um, consistent core data encoding, budget coding, um, which we think is the root of some of the issues. So making sure that all departments are operating off of the same budget codes, and we hire new employees, or when an employee transfers. Uh, we've put some new documents in place that, um, run the appropriate workflow for when an employee is hired or transferred. Uh, we just need to get those put into the digital system of, of frontline now. But that initiates a workflow that notifies all departments that need to know when somebody's been hired and has a new budget code, or there's a change, or a transmittal, or things like that. Um, or also, I mean, we continue meeting monthly. Uh, the perpetual calendar that we put in place, uh, is broken down by month, and then who's responsible for each part, and then they have a part where they sign off when, when their task is completed. So those are just a few of the things that we've put in place, but we're continuing to work through it.
Thank you.
Hey, could call the vote, please? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yep.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes all approved. Thank you, Dr. Adams.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Hedgecort.
Yes, so in front of you, I have our quarterly investment report that shows our different investments with MoCap for operating our healthcare trust and also our bond proceeds. And then what the, um, with each one of those, you see the separate documents for those balances as well, if, in the investment-
I'm going to answer it, Dr. Hedgecort.
Sorry?
Hedgecort, I'm sorry. Because we made a-
Yeah.
A change on the agenda.
Yeah.
So we pulled, uh-
Turf projects change order.
The ones that we pulled down, your A T G turf projects change order.
Oh, do we take those first?
I don't think that we-
Sure.
Yeah.
No problem.
So I had-
I J K you now.
I'll just explain. So I had taken G, H, and I, um, because at the last meeting, I said that I would approve it if I heard about how the finances were with the bond project tracking tool. And so I wanted to have a conversation about that before approving them. Um, twenty-five, uh, on K, the twenty-five, twenty-six paper bid, it doesn't say who won the bid. Um, it's my understanding that it was, it's going to Clayton as the second lowest, but also local, correct?
Correct.
Correct. But in the actual document, it doesn't say who the bid was going to, so that's why I moved it.
Okay, so let's take, um, I, the A T G, the turf change order.
G. Wait, did I do you first?
It was G, but it's, you know, the I, but yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we're looking at G first.
I have a motion to approve it.
One second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, call the vote, please.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yep.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes all approved. M A G change order.
I'll second. I do have a question about what's going on with Central.
Absolutely. Uh, so currently, uh, we were promised to have a crew last week. Uh, the contractor failed to meet that obligation. Um, or the promise, I guess it wasn't obligation, the promise that they, uh, gave us. So right now, the, the crew is scheduled to finish up either Wednesday or Thursday at Lafayette, and then they will move to, uh, Central to begin the installation there.
Okay, so we'll miss the first one, maybe?
Correct.
And so that's been moved to-
It's been moved to Missouri Western.
But it, it's not at the price that you mentioned last time.
Three thousand?
Yeah, thank you. You added a zero last time. And then remember, people like-
Well, I heard, I did say three thousand.
Oh, okay. I thought you said thirty as well, and I was like-
Yeah, I discovered that. Sorry about that.
And we're gonna have three thousand mad on the budget.
We're just gonna come out of the budget.
It'd be an activity account, that's what it'll come out of. Activity account.
Okay. From the school's activity account?
Correct.
Okay.
And I saw that they're rescheduling the first game to Saturday, after that, it'll go back to the Friday.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Is there an estimated length of date that will be completed?
Uh, usually typically it's fourteen to seventeen days once, once it begins the turf installation.
When's your second home game?
Nineteenth.
Thank you.
It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be completed by then, though.
Yeah, I will say, I will say that there's, um, we do have one, uh, sub Barstee game. It's right now a C team game with, uh, a school district. It's on September first, uh, for Central. Uh, that would be moved more likely to Benton to be played because that field is open on September first. So that sub Barstee game would be played between Central and Winnetonka at Benton. Um, Lafayette already has a game on the first, the sub Barstee game, so, but we'll use that one in town to, to take care of that sub Barstee game on September first.
Good.
I did want to mention, if you don't mind, um, Casey's done absolutely everything he has in his power, um, to make sure that these fields are getting done, getting the attention they need. Um, I could go into a long informational piece on why they're where they're at. Um, you know, those started many, 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 many months ago. I won't, you know, rehash all that, but, um, I can tell you from my time here, I have seen Casey come up with all sorts of innovative ideas, uh, that did end up going through because of the, some of the contractors that were willing to do it, of ways to try to get these things done. So, uh, I appreciate his efforts. All these things are out of his control. Um, and, and so, you know, I know he's the one up here, you know, mentioning and talking about, um, the progress on these, but, um, I just want to let you know from my vantage point, I mean, he has absolutely done everything he has, and I appreciate his efforts on it.
And they look wonderful.
And they look amazing.
Thank you, Casey.
I have a motion in a second.
Could you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yep.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes all approved. Okay, now the H back.
Oh. All right. I'm here for next. So I'm gonna vote yes on this one as well, but, um, how are we doing? What's it look like?
We're doing very well. Um, it's exciting. Uh, Eugene Field is one hundred percent as of today.
Good.
Um, on Saturday, we finished, uh, hoisting all the units up on top of Mark Twain. Um, so I, I, I have plans and, and hopes that by the end of this week, we're starting to, start to commission some of those at Mark Twain. Um, on Edison, um, it's, we're probably ninety percent. Um, it'll be two weeks, I'll be my guess.
Good.
At the latest.
I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second. You have some favorable letters.
Additional session?
Thank goodness, yes.
Sorry, no.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yep.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yep.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes. And the motion passes all approved. Thank you, Mr. Casey.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Chesney?
Okay, this one is, uh, my fault probably why it's up there like that. Sorry about that. Um, I thought it would be an action item because my paper bid normally is an action item, so I thought I would bring it to you guys for your choice, and then it was in the other one, and I completely spaced it. So I put that out to bid, I got seven bids, um, back, seven vendors with, I don't know, twelve paper choices. Two of them we vote out immediately because they jam in our machines, and for every one piece of paper, you know, we waste twenty, so it ends up being more, um, to have that kind of paper. Then it came down to, um, two bidders, one is a St. Joseph, and one is Kansas City. In the past, um, you guys have went with the St. Joseph. I would agree with that, I would support that decision, but I thought I would put that back in your, your hands to decide if that's, because it is within your percentage now.
Make a motion to approve Clayton.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? And if there are none, would you call the vote, please?
So get it in, yeah. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
And the motion passes all approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Hedgecort.
Yes, in front of you, you have the quarterly investment report that shows how our investments are tracking with MoCap, and there's some individual documents that show those individual funds, and then, uh, separate documents showing the proceeds for each one of those funds. And if you happen to answer any questions?
I move to approve.
It's an informational item?
Oh.
I second that.
Okay, I like the information.
If there are no questions, the Dr. Hedgecort?
Yeah, on the second piece, um, you have is the, uh, budget projection tool, and that was, uh, discussed in, in detail at the last meeting. Um, something I did want to give you an update on, at that meeting, we talked about having, um, the executive director of M S B A, um, of director, executive director of finance, Linda Quinley, uh, to come look over our finances and do a board workshop or session with you. Um, I've contacted her, and she has agreed to come onsite and do that. Um, her question to you was, would you like that in a special workshop, or would you like that during one of the normal workshop or board meetings to have that information that she, um, finds onsite when she comes to visit our district?
Okay, I think that, does that, how long is she gonna take?
I, I would say probably somewhere between five to ten minutes would be my guess on the presentation, and then depending on the questions you had, um, could go into different detail if that five to ten minute, you know, presentation gave you, you know, questions that you might want to answer based on the information.
Sounds like a good work session topic.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay. So I'll let her know that you're looking at the work session, um, and then I guess it would just fall in the next work session that's available after she wraps up all of her analysis. Is that how you'd want to do that? Okay.
Yeah.
I would say her analysis will happen pretty much during September. Um, and then you would, it would probably be the October workshop, where we might guess, she, she might be able to wrap it up before then for a September workshop, but that might be present a little bit. So I would say probably October, but, um, you know, it could possibly be September, but probably October.
Yeah, I think, I think October seems like it's gonna be reasonable because there's Labor Day in there, and-
True.
That's gonna be the eighth of September, so that's pretty close to now, so.
Right. But I was happy that she, um, you know, listened to all the information, um, that I had about kind of our situation, and, and was happy to assist in, in doing that analysis for us.
Thanks for doing that.
Absolutely. Any other questions I can answer on, um, the bond, or sorry, on the budget projection tool? Um, you know, one thing I can say about this is, on the, um, second scenario where I have us coming out of that ten point zero two percent, I can tell you as a team, we've met and gone through some, uh, you know, scenarios of different budget cuts. Um, and, and we are ahead of the five hundred thousand purchase service and five hundred thousand, um, supplies that I have as just this one scenario. So that is great news, and then I, of course, I will have that, uh, to you in the October budget revision of, of where we're at, and then also a new projection tool showing you with all those cuts in there. So, um, it will be better than that second page that I have up here in front of you.
Thank you.
We, we had talked about a corrective, a corrective action plan of some sort of how we got, and I know that there were several, um, several factors that got us to where we are. Uh, and I think about one of the last meetings, I think it was a work session, I don't remember which, that we had talked about some sort of corrective action of what things are gonna be put in place to prevent that.
Right.
When can we get that?
Yeah, so I'm, would like to have that four to five page report with October.
Okay, that's right.
Because we'll be working on that, uh, you know, in, in parallel with our long-range facility plan.
Okay.
Um, you know, with this topic we talked about at the beginning of the board meeting, so, uh, those will kind of run side by side, so.
Perfectly fine.
And I, I, I work with pressure on you because of the timing, so I, I, but I do say this, I think it'd be a nice practice to see if we can get those figures plugged into the, um, budget projection plan.
Sure, um, we can-
And I say that in support of why you're doing, not a, not a-
We could definitely have, one of the pages have a scenario, um, you know, a two-high school system with, you know, this being the feeder system, or this being a feeder system, and kind of put that in. If you start getting too many scenarios, it can start to get a little cloudy, but, um, yeah, we can definitely show long range, okay, if we have these savings for this scenario, that's, that's what it'll look like in F Y twenty-nine, F Y thirty.
Yeah, and I know we're all on some learning curve on the projection, to, you know, how much of that is reality versus how much of it's projection, but-
Sure.
I, I just think to have a tool like that would be, um, would be a good place to practice and see that.
Sure, absolutely. With the revenues, I mean, it's a very predictable tool, um, as long as the state doesn't change, you know, um, drastically from, from where they're at, which they could with the formula rewrite. Um, you know, our property taxes and what we've had on assessed valuation from year to year, uh, has, has been pretty predictable, so, uh, that's the majority of the revenue that we get. The unpredictability part has been some of the federal with, you know, all the S R stuff, so, um, you know, and you can control most of your own expenses when you, without you, you know, uh, have know, have your salaries and benefits and, you know, your facilities, so that facility piece will go right into our expenses side of that, so.
Okay, and your next item? I know you've already kind of talked about it.
Yeah, we had that in there twice, so I might have, you know, actually put it in the financials as well as the bond project tracking, I want to make sure everybody saw it, so.
If there's, so, from my understanding, but absolutely correct me, if we do underspend in those projects that we currently have, if we underspend, the remaining funds can be, because of the way the election, the ballot language, we can put those towards capital expenses, correct?
Yes, so, we have a lot of different HVAC projects that are going on, some of those were from the bond, and some of those were just out of capital projects, so if we do have savings from the bonds, we can apply those to the other HVAC projects per the way the budget was.
Okay, and that's just gonna be, so if it's already been done, and it's already gone out of fund four, it's just gonna be like a journal entry?
Yeah, so what we would do is basically, we can make a journal entry to re-code that to the bond funds, or, you know, we have a lot of ongoing things, so there might be something we may finish up that we now realize are savings, it can just go right away, so. Which will help our, our budget, because we won't have to transfer as much from fund one or fund two, so.
Gotcha.
Okay, Mr. Crown?
All right, we are suggesting a change in policy GBCBC, which deals with staff absences and tardiness, it's really just the absences that we're gonna focus on, so I, currently the policy states that in order for the absences of a staff member to be excessive, this does not include FMLA, does not include military leave, workman's comp, all of these legal ab, legal absences. Currently, our policy states that a staff member can miss five days in a month, 15 days in a semester, and 30 days in a school year. We hold our students accountable for 90% attendance, we hold our staff accountable to about 84% attendance, if they miss more than 30 days. Based on some of the data that I received, and this data has removed all staff who either was out on leave for FMLA, military, or workman's comp, so if they missed one day under any of those categories, they could have missed 50 days, but if they missed one day of FMLA or military or workman's comp, they were not included in this data. So, John Hattie, who is an expert in education, he has identified specific points that shows that high-quality teachers that are in front of students has one of the largest effect size on student outcomes. So if we have student, if we have teachers in front of our students, 90% of the time or more, there's a better chance that they're going to have higher outcomes. Just a few examples, so, teachers alone, so I did year-to-date on missing more than 30 days, so we had four staff members who missed more than 30 days. It's, it's also difficult as a building administrator to have conversations with our staff members who have not exceeded any of these absences based on policy. You really can't go to them if they've missed 15 days in a semester. We can suggest and maybe tell them that we missed them, but to actually have a conversation, it's, according to policy, extremely difficult. So we had four teachers that missed more than 30 days in an entire school year, we are suggesting that we change the policy to go five days in a month, excuse me, no more than five days in a month, no more than 18 days in a semester, excuse me, nine days in a semester, and 18 days in a school year, which would be right around 90% for our staff. So if we reduced it down to 18 days, excuse me, more than 18 days, we have 22 staff members who have missed more than 18 days of school in a school year. When you go to teachers in a semester, more than 15 days, we had five, and then we had 50 staff members who missed more than nine. Now, we are not talking about the staff members who have a child who is sick for a week, they're having conversations with building administrators, they're providing doctor's notes, these would be individuals that are just chronically absent. When you go down to staff, I kind of identified them, for those who have direct contact with students, and those who kind of have indirect contact with students, you can see those that are directly involved with our students do have higher absentee rates, now that could be because we have more staff members in those categories, but it is alarming to us that with these individuals, we have 50 staff members who have missed in a school year more than 18 days, we have 105 staff members in a semester who have missed more than nine. We'll entertain any questions, or maybe this is something you guys don't even want to go down or pursue, and that's, and that's totally okay.
I'll put my input here, so, I'm kind of torn with this one, just because I get your reasoning, you want them to hold the same expectation, so, but here's my concern. So I looked at the policies of everywhere around, not everywhere, but a few places around us, and they're 20-40, so we're already got them cut down from 20 to 40, and then we're gonna cut them down even more. I sit here and I think the percentage that's not doing it is so low, I wish there was a way we can incentivize the ones that are having a good attendance instead of penalizing all of them for the ones that are having bad attendance, if that makes sense. I don't know, I just feel like, I get what you're saying, I just, my other thinking is, I don't know if I like the idea.
If you're talking about other school districts' policies, that's what you're talking about?
So I kind of looked, I looked at, and I'll tell you, I looked at Savannah and I looked at North Kansas City, are the two I looked at, it was late, so I only got those two, but they're 5, 20-40.
Correct.
If I looked at, so, we're already cutting them down, I just, now we're just gonna cut them even more now compared to our surrounding.
Have we talked to MSDA or NEA about this?
We have not.
I would, I, I will vote based on the input from NEA and MSDA.
I'd like their inputs a lot.
Mark, I like, or, yeah, Mark, I'm really Mark, I like the concept, in any industry, that would be far out of bounds, even the new, even the new standard, and so, the idea on attendance is, you're not restricting somebody that's had a catastrophic event or something that like that's happening, but casual attendance causes all kinds of trouble with substitutes, all those kind of things, and I don't think that those numbers are unreasonable from my experience. I'm, I'm not saying we're gonna vote on it, I respect what the others said about the information, but I think that, I think that that's a, that's a good, normal thing to happen in a professional position.
I think that's the expectation, we have other children in our district, and that families, obviously, they're the ones that get their children to school, I think we're a little ahead of break if we're not following that, as the adults in our buildings as well, so I think it's important that, and, and when you think about how many people it, it will affect, it's very few, so hopefully, that helps that number move over to, I'm going to come to work because that's the expectation, so that's kind of where I would stand on that.
I just, I wanted to share something, there's nothing worse than, if I'm a teacher that attends all the time, what's happening is our quality educators are having to cover classes, because we can't get substitutes, and so then you're asking, if I'm an elementary teacher that shows up, and we all get that there's going to be personal, personal and family emergencies that happen, perhaps in a year, right? But if it's chronic, it is the biggest climate and culture killer if I don't have a break, or if I'm asked to combine classes at the elementary level. I just, I wanted to share that, in our work, when we work in the classrooms, one of the things that we're trying to do is, you know, show individuals that we value them, and if, if we come in to provide curriculum instruction support, or check on an individual to see is there anything we need, is, is, that's one of the first things the quality individual would say.
And I would actually agree with you, I mean, I run an organization, and chronic absences, I mean, it's a major issue, I'm just leery of making a policy change without the input of the teacher unions, I mean, in all honesty, I bet they would agree with you, you know, but, to make it official, I mean, I would like that, are we able to get that information?
Yeah, I will, I'll reach out to them.
And here's another question, I don't know if I can word this correctly, so, on the policy, it says employees may be disciplined or terminated for excessive absence or tardiness, which I'm assuming if they go over this nine or 18 days. So, someone that's had several time buildup, and they have a bad semester, obviously, they don't have bad attendance because they got time buildup, so they've had good attendance all along, if they go over these days, just one time, because, again, it's a bad semester, are they gonna be disciplined or terminated because of that one instance, or one?
I would assume that, I'm, I'm just speaking from experience as a administrator, that if it's a, if I'm in a building for three years and I know my staff, and they've had an issue whether, and hopefully, if it's something, mental health, or that they've applied for FMLA anyway, that's gonna cover it, but usually just having those conversations just to let them know that we're here for you and we understand, but we also have students that we have to take care of too. I can't speak for other administrators, but for me, it's going to be a conversation, it's not going to be, I'm gonna immediately seek termination, but if it's something that's ongoing with a staff member, we need to be able to address that.
Right. Again, I get your reasoning behind it, but I agree, I think going to the unions and getting their opinion would be a good idea on this one.
Okay, anything else on this topic? Okay, next, the board budget, like kind of lists all of us. I guess we can begin with looking at the budget, and looking at the information that we received a little over a week ago, in an email about ideas about cuts. I looked at the email and I know that it, it's my opinion that like, a majority of the cuts, I think are reasonable, except cutting our options for professional development and training. I do think, especially right now, you know, that the board needs, and I'm also including myself, as many opportunities for training as we're able to get, while and by just cutting it nearly in half, I don't think is a good move, especially when we can make other cuts elsewhere. I do think that like, it was mentioning about food being optional on nights at board meetings, about the mayor's Thanksgiving dinner, about the Ignite, event at Mosaic, I think that those are reasonable, are reasonable cuts. I just, I'm just leery of cutting off half of the board's training, and then as a member of MSBA, of their board, I'm actually obligated in order to do typical things all year long, and then I'm also encouraged to bring my board along as a part of, of the professional development and training. Also mentioned on the cuts, where, this is my paper, a big one was the legislative partnership, is that the community alliance? Or is that something different? Is that the?
That's the Friday call.
It's the lobbying agreement. Yeah, but, and we mentioned this, what, like, a few months ago?
We talked about that.
About the contract and about the importance, and if we're able to get information elsewhere, I mean, what do you guys think? I see your mind, Mike, what's up?
You know, look, I, I, I like the idea of, you know, we're, we're in this with the whole district and we, and we, we can save some money. I, I don't know that we can just carte blanche, say, okay, we're not, we're, we're gonna go to half of the trainings we used to, I think maybe we, we look at the number of people going, and the purpose that they're going, and the needs on the board, so maybe we can get a lot leaner, I just don't know if that number is half.
Well, well, and then also, I was looking at the information, and when I initially joined on the board, a majority of the trainings, a lot of the people on the board, in those earlier years, only went to the mandatory ones, and so, I mean, it was a lot cheaper. Well, well, now, a lot of times, it's a quorum or more, and then I, I'm just leery of, if we're in charge of so much, cutting off our opportunities for professional development, I mean, in my opinion, it's kind of, kind of productive.
Latanya, I have a question on that, is, MSBA is, is the one that's normally providing that training, is, is it, you know, they've come here and done something, is it more cost-effective for them to come here and speak directly to us, or it's more expensive than, than all of us traveling?
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of curious what other ideas you have then?
So I have?
What other ideas you've thought of?
So my, my?
Instead of, instead of cutting that, what are some other ideas that you have?
Well, if you look at the email, I mean, it's cutting a lot of our public appearances, you know, that we like have paid for. The, I also looked at the one that's attached to the agenda, tribute to teachers, I mean, I wouldn't want to cut that, you know, but I mean, if we need to cut it, it needs to be cut.
What is, so, what is that, is that that whole event? There's still 175 left of that.
Tribute to teachers. In the past, we have sponsored a table for the board, and I spoke with Julie Kova about this, and she said that we do not need to sponsor a table going forward, that you guys can attend as a staff member for a cost of $25 a head, so we can count that by law.
Well, I am also looking at that, our conference in Kansas City, I don't mind coming home and not having a hotel, though, it's a 45-minute drive, and I'm, only because I value those conferences, the connections there are, the training we get, and those things I think are important, they're important to me, and some of the things they offer, but I don't mind making that drive, even if I don't get reimbursed on the gas, you know, I don't care about that, but to be able to attend is my desire, I don't have to stay the night because it's right there. The one in Southern Missouri is a little different, but it's only an overnighter usually. So that's one way that might make it easier on that particular item for a conference or for training, but I like participating in local events where we get to be with the community. I, I appreciate that, I like to do that, that's how we learn what the community prefers, how they're invested in, in the school systems. No, I'm not, I'm not a proponent of some of them that are pretty expensive, but like the mayor's breakfast, that is a way to participate with the community, but Ignite, that's a, that's a different story for me, it's a fundraising night.
So is the mayor's Thanksgiving.
Well, but for different purposes.
Health care?
The prices are different.
Health care food?
Prices are different, so, that's my opinion, if it's local Kansas City, we can take ourselves, come home, you know, for a If it's local Kansas City, we can take ourselves, come home, you know, for a price cut there. So I'm willing to shave as much as I can off.
My question too about is driving the district car. Whether the rules for driving a district car, then none of us would have to incur mileage that way. I don't know what the rules are, the insurance.
Yeah, I remember you mentioned that, and I said, I do not want to drive a district car. I don't want to.
I don't mind driving it. I don't know what the rules are.
We can ask legal about that. I haven't seen anything in board policy that refers to board members, but we can ask legal about that.
Because I see, when we go in those, I see other districts, vans and vehicles and things there where they've come together. So just curious.
And it's only an informational item right now, you know, but I think a big one could be the legis, well, because in all honesty, I mean, I know that on the call, it's not a lot of board participation anyway. It's mainly only, I mean, a couple of us, and we can get that information elsewhere. I mean.
I get 38 emails on those things.
Well, well, it-
So it's not just from that person.
And then I, I remember when we were looking at the contract at the beginning of the year. I mean, a couple, a few of us were kind of against it then anyway. And so, I mean, if we're going to begin someplace, I'd be okay. I'm more apt in agreement with cutting that over training.
I, I agree with you and Kim both on the training part. And I think my reasoning for that is what I've said before, that we have new board members every year. And I think having that training is important. I would absolutely support ending the legislative partnership for $10,000. We're already getting legislative updates from cooperating school districts of greater Kansas City through that lobbyist. We're also getting it through MSBA, so I think it's duplicative. I would also be fine with getting rid of all board food, bringing a sack lunch or a snack. But if we don't want to do that, that's fine. I'm fine with the Mosaic, the Mosaic event being cut. I didn't see the fly-in on, or the fly, the fly-in is on here, so I'm fine with that too. The last handful of times, I don't know that public education has even been a discussion about that. I'd also be fine with cutting the chamber membership, but that's probably not going to happen.
So did we already, did we know why we're so over on legal fees this year?
Well, it's been a pretty difficult year. And so legal fees were a little more up in the past 18 months or so. I know that it was interesting. I never knew that all the legal fees of the district are in, in the board budget. I never knew that. I think that's interesting, but I mean, if that's as it is, I mean, it's as it is, you know, but it will be lower going forward, I'm thinking. And then it was an extra bond last year too, and that was extra money in that category as well, you know, that's not normally in there. So like-
For a 10-year term?
Yes.
Soup search?
Yes.
I mentioned that in my email. It was also extra funds in that avenue as well. And so, I mean, we're actually already cutting a lot of expenses just having a quote-unquote, I guess, normal year, even though it really isn't normal, but you know what I get. And so.
So Ashley, are you asking all departments to cut 10% or what are you asking of other departments?
Yes, Dr. Hatchworth has loved this charge, but yes, we're asking all departments to cut a minimum of 10%. Sometimes that's not as feasible with some departments. And then other departments, like technology and operations companies, will cut significantly more. So I'll let you speak to that if you'd like.
Yeah, the hard part is when you look at our budget, it's a piece of pie. 25% of it is supplies and purchase service, which we're looking at here. And 75% of it is costs with people, because we're a people-based business, right? So we're all having a lot of discussions about that 25%. And then whatever we can't cut from that 25%, we'll have to start having discussions about a 75% now. We hope for that to be things with attrition and be able to shift, you know, things around. So the more we can do in that purchase service and supplies, then less we'll have to do elsewhere. So a lot of our conversations, you know, because there's two sides almost every discussion.
Well, I feel like as a board, that if we're asking other people in the district to have a cut, that our cut should be very similar or equal to their cut so that we're all in this together. So I'm having a hard time seeing the numbers because my eyes are old. But I think looking at us thinking together as a group, how we're going to do cuts that are similar to what we're asking other people to do.
Yeah, I think just an example, when they come in from MSBA and having that expert, you know, the more we can contact MSBA for different legal questions and not our other attorneys. Because MSBA's legal representation is covered by the $13,500 for our membership. And so I'm always trying to call Susan Goldhammer for anything, especially with policy. The more I can converse with them, but there are some things you have to contact outside. There just is. But trying to talk through the staff, that will certainly help as well. So.
Let me make a comment. One is, I appreciate you going through this and giving a recommendation. And I'm a, I'm a pretty conservative person. You'll learn that. But I, I, I think we should consider complying with that, particularly this year. And I, I respect the things about the additional training that probably applies to me as much as anybody. I think we, we take a look at some of those. I think we've heard from everybody that that may be a thing that we need to not take such a big cut. But I think on the others, we probably need to feel the pain a little bit because that's what we're asking others to do. And our percentage will be higher, but ours is more discretionary spending than, than some of the areas. And so I'm, I'm basically in support of it with the other comments about training.
Is the Great Nor, so the Great Northwest Days, that, there's more to that than just that $350, or at least there should be. Because we included in that event is travel per DM and-
I think that's also included in like the-
Or is it somewhere down here?
Hotels for board.
Hotels.
Above that.
I know, but there's extra charges and stuff like, about meals and-
Okay.
Gas too, but that's.
So I would just add, all of our staff are cutting conferences as well. I understand the importance of that. I value that. I value that learning as well. And but when our staff are trimming that professional learning, I think anything that we can do on our budgets helps us pour into people that are serving our kids.
I'm going to talk accountability, and just, can we add maybe like a simple little chart, like board spending last year, board spending year-to-date, and just know that we're on track? Because I don't want this to be the last time we have this conversation.
Yes.
Cool.
Well, and then about your comment about the staff also cutting professional development, I think that's okay in a way, you know, okay, but they're also educated and degreed in their field. And we're just normal, average, everyday elected individuals who are just doing our best. I mean, I don't think I would be able to be the board member I am if there were not like, a lot of opportunities, you know, for training and such. And so I just, I don't want any kind of educational opportunities. Cutting that is always very, I mean, I'll starve every board meeting and every event. I'm completely okay with that, you know, but I just want an educated, an educated board. And we can continue, you know, to discuss this. In all honesty, it appears as a fall out of, like, all of us are pretty like-minded.
Yeah.
And that's good.
So can you all send us a list of things to collectively to trim? Because we're working on the budget revision for October, so this year we have that for better.
Okay, but we're not going to trim it until we all agree on what to trim, though, right? Okay. And will you email that list, if you can email it, to all four of us? Thank you. Anything else on that topic? Okay, great. On the board notes, if you're just able to keep an eye on our next batch of the policies. And then I think that a majority of us are enrolled in order to go to the meeting at the end of next month on Midbuck, right, Ms. Donna? And that's pretty much all I had. I really haven't done anything ever since the last meeting. Anybody else have anything?
I like to talk about our district and the first week of school. After witnessing these great rooms that have been created at Hosea, going to that ribbon cutting and then to opening night, the schools are open. Our, the staff is amazing, excited. They were all welcoming the kids, the parents. It was also an opportunity to see our bond money at work, how it's improving. We hear a lot about, wow, it's not done yet. Why isn't it done? But it, it's just nice to see the progress, knowing that there is. And to see that they work in spite of that. They work with our kids in spite of maybe a little, you know, a road mishap out front, trying to finish the, the parking lot at Oak Grove. But nobody pays attention to that because they're caring for their kids. So it has just been wonderful to be at the schools. Like last week, to watch the kids come in, the staff enthusiastic, ready for schooling, ready to be with our kids. And nobody's complaining. Nobody has anything bad to say or mean they're just, just excited to be there. Now, I do have to say, it was a little tough at Mark Twain. My, my first time when the kids are coming in, the first day of school to an early learning center. So it was interesting. The children are crying going in, but the parents are crying going out. And it just, it just gets you because that's their baby now that they're, they're, they're out of their hands. But it was wonderful to be able to participate in that and see the excitement, to see the kids ready, to see the buildings with brand-new rooms, with parking lots being built. It, it just was good. So your tax dollars are working well, and our staff is amazing. Very welcoming, very enthusiastic. So it was great. Every place I went, they were like that. So I am grateful for our staff who's ready.
Me and Tom had a fun at Hosea last Friday. Does all the schools' alma trees do that or just?
Picket does now, I think.
Just picket.
I think it's a growing trend. Coleman is also doing that, and I know Pershing does as well.
You know, to Kim's point, I saw a few kids that were having a little separation challenge with their parents. And you can't believe how the teachers, and, I mean, you guys can, but to witness the teachers helping that student and even the safety resource officer helping that student and connecting with them and saying, hey, I'll walk them right all the way to class, you know, meeting the needs, taking the time with the child, and winning them over. They wouldn't have won one over without the extra effort of the teachers. If they stood their hands off, those kids wouldn't have gotten home that day. And so it was awesome to see that and realize, again, I wouldn't have been able to do it, but see them do it. They really care about those kids.
I appreciate your comments, guys. Thank you so much.
Motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to 6:10.021. Closed meetings and closed records for legal, hiring, firing, discipline, or promoting of particular employees and individually identifiable personnel records.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second, Mike.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richman?
This meeting's adjourned.